This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Spagley, Christensen, Finley, Moore, Peck, Santos. Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak at final call, publicly invited to be heard, on any item at the end of the meeting. So now we have the February 7th minutes. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of the February 7th minutes.
Second. All right, that's been moved in second, and let's vote. That passes seven to zero. And we also have the Valentine Statement. It's February 14th to approve. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move approval of the February 14th, 2017 minutes.
All right, it's been moved in second, and let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. We will be pulling item 8L today, the youth core item on consent. It'll be coming back at another meeting.
Okay.
Eight L.
Eight L.
Eight L.
Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance to allow for up to six retail slash medical marijuana shops that are located away from the core DDA and also located away from schools. Councilmember Peck?
Mayor Coombs, I second that, if that's in motion.
Okay. All right, got a motion. It's been seconded. Councilmember Spagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Remember when last week everyone was like, "You're crazy." Why are we, I mean, no, we can do resolutions. Here we are, surprise motion, Mayor, much as I love you. You know, I thought we weren't going to do that. I thought we were going to wait till, like, wait a week. I thought that's what we had agreed to.
No, this is, this is our procedure to bring something. We're just asking them to bring something back. Nothing's happening.
No, no, I know, but what I'm saying, okay, so the process we're going to follow, just to be clear, is that we can always make a motion to ask staff to bring something back on the fly?
Right. Yeah, as long as we get enough, you know, consensus of people for votes.
I just want to make sure. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Wasn't staff going to bring something back here relatively soon?
No, not in that direction.
We were working on the one that's on tonight. There wasn't a direction from council in terms of retail. I think as we ended that conversation, it was unclear in the direction from council on that one, if I remember correctly. I'm, yeah, we need to go back and look at it in more detail.
Yeah, I believe there was direction that after this was done, that staff was going to bring back. I think this is...
Yep, that's what they're saying. That's it. We're going through this one first and then bringing something back.
Is staff prepared to bring something back here next week?
No, no.
I think it's a little premature.
Councilmember Christensen?
My recollection is that we were going to bring back something after the state had gone through, after the state registration was ready, which is now, I guess, and also after this state session, which would be in May.
So, Aaron just...
But also that it would be a maximum of four stores.
That's what Aaron just, actually, Aaron just reminded me that we were going to get through the home grow piece of this. Then we were going to bring something back, and it was a maximum of four stores. And they were going to start that after they finished this.
All right, well, I'll amend my motion to four stores.
And we were going to bring that back as a discussion item to get more clarity from council.
Okay, and that would happen after the second reading on the home grows?
At some point, they need to do more work on that to bring stuff, to bring information back to you. So I would probably say within a month or so.
Okay. All right, then I'll withdraw my motion since you're planning on, see, my recollection is we were going to wait till after the survey, and the survey came back saying that the majority of people wanted us to bring this forward. So maybe I'm misremembering, but I didn't know that we'd given you direction to formally. So I just want to make sure that we are now formally giving you a direction.
Right, right.
Okay.
Either way, it works.
Okay, we're fine. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. But it was good that you brought it up as a reminder to let the public know we haven't forgotten.
Okay. All right. Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor, council.
All right. Now we have first call, publicly invited to be heard. We got Angel Hacey, Hayes?
Like that? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening to talk about the city ordinance which would ban marijuana growing in attached homes.
Do you need to start with your name, Mayor, please?
Oh, sorry, from the city of Longmont. Angel Hayes, 800 Lincoln Street in Longmont. And I'm here to talk about the city ordinance which would ban marijuana growing in attached homes in the city of Longmont. I supported legalization of marijuana, definitely for medical purposes. However, I was completely unaware of the hazards associated with residential growing. I live in a 12-unit condo community in Old Town, and last year, one of my attached neighbors established a grow room in a bedroom adjacent to my own bedroom. The home was built in 1961, and there is no insulation between units. To shorten a much longer story, the situation became a serious hazard to my health. There are guidelines set forth to grow safely at home. This particular residence employed no additional ventilation whatsoever. I noticed the smell and had some minor respiratory issues, but it wasn't until winter when I had to close up my own home that the greenhouse effect became toxic to me. The week before Thanksgiving, after having spent $6,000 in home improvements, new windows and a furnace in my house, just for home improvement, I had to move out of my house part-time as the effects became dramatic. I had no idea that was even possible and originally thought that there was a mold problem in my house, which I had checked and there wasn't. I'm inside my house most of the time due to a chronic illness that I, that I have. So I'm more affected than other people might be. However, even guests in my own home had to leave because they had headaches, coughing spells, et cetera. It was horrible, and honestly, it was shocking to me because I didn't know that could happen. I continue to support medical marijuana legalization. However, under no circumstances should growing be allowed in attached homes, in my opinion. If a person living in an attached home uses marijuana medically or recreationally, it is abundant to purchase, unaffected by whether or not they grow at home. If I am impaired by an attached neighbor's grow room, what recourse do I have? There isn't any currently, other than to move. I purchased my home through Programs for Persons with Disabilities in 2007. That was a one-time availability. I love my home. It's everything to me. And I would have to leave the state of Colorado to afford a single-family home, which would be drastic. And that doesn't even address the potential property damage associated with growing, which can be catastrophic. I have two handouts that I brought for you this evening. One describes guidelines by the state of Colorado for safe home growing, and my question is, who would monitor that in an attached home? The other is a federal report about the hazards of residential growing. There have been numerous residential fires related to residential growing, and if someone wants to risk that in their own home, that's one thing, but to endanger my life, living in an attached home, is quite another. And I just encourage you to please give serious and strong consideration to prohibiting growing and processing marijuana in attached homes in Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Shepard?
Good evening, Jerry Shepard. My office address is 710 11th Avenue, Suite 203D in Greeley. I have quite a few friends here in Longmont, and I'm also on the board for Colorado Normal. Ashley Weber sends her a regret. She had a function with her son and couldn't be here today. I wanted to thank you all for your work on coming up with an ordinance that does protect patients, protects people in the community, has a balance to minimize externalized costs to other people who may not appreciate cannabis or marijuana. And I would ask that the council keep the language as much as it can the way is. I am mindful, that's like our previous speaker, that not everybody agrees with this. I wouldn't mind seeing the studies because it would be appropriate to be able to look at those and comment. Obviously, I've not seen them today. But I do appreciate the efforts that you have made, and I would hope that this ordinance passes. I appreciate the balance that is struck to ensure regulatory compliance, but also ensure constitutional rights to privacy under both the United States and Colorado constitutions. Thank you again for all your work. If you need anything from me, I'm in Greeley. You can give me a call or email me. Thanks again.
Thank you. Caleb Lacy?
Hi, I'm Caleb Lacy. My address is 1532 Bowen Street, and I'd like to talk about the Longmont Ice Rink. I like the Longmont Ice Rink because I can meet all my friends there. It's a fun place to be, and it wouldn't be the same without it.
Thank you. John Lacy?
I have the same address as Caleb Lacy, 1532 Bowen Street, and I like to go play hockey there. And it is, I mostly want to not be, have to drive 15 to 20 minutes to go play in Boulder, and it would also cost more to play there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Johnson?
I'm Laura Johnson. My address is 1532 Bowen Street. I'm here to talk about the Longmont Ice Rink and the concrete that's broken under the ice rink this year. The ice rink is very important to me and my family. We spend a lot of time there. And not fixing the ice rink for next winter would affect not only us, but a lot of the other skating and hockey members that play. My kids are over there for open skate. They go meet their friends there. They play hockey there. It's a great social thing for them. We see special needs groups there. They have figure skating there. And we just wanted to come and impress how important the ice rink is and fixing it and not, not having it closed next year and the social impact that would have on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. Ethan Chutko, 156 11th Avenue. I'm here to follow up again on the concern of our illegal parking of vehicles within the city limits. To jog your memory and provide context, I want to give you an update on the situation pertinent to my neighborhood here in Old Town. As you may recall, we had a man living in a non-motorized trailer parked in front of my house for over four weeks. This individual's criminal record of drugs and weapon charges made for the Longmont Police to pay close attention to the situation. When I last spoke to you three weeks ago, the trailer had been moved to nearby trailer park, and the immediate, immediate situation had been resolved for me and my neighbors. Nevertheless, I came to the city council as a concerned citizen to ensure that the ambiguous code that had allowed for this situation to have lasted four weeks be clarified, reevaluated, and perhaps rewritten. Since that visit, my visit, the man and his trailer have returned to the street in front of my house after his arrest and subsequent eviction from the trailer park. Yesterday, the man was hauled away in handcuffs again, leaving the stationary vehicle behind. I should note that this vehicle has a flat tire and broken taillights. Upon the arrest, code enforcement tagged the vehicle for immediate removal, deeming it both abandoned and junked. For the obvious reason of wanting to keep the streets and neighborhoods of Longmont safe and compliant with regulation, the Longmont Police indicated they would be towing this vehicle immediately. Thank you, code enforcement and the police, for your attention to the matter and your continuous effort to maintain Longmont as a city I pridefully call home. But last night, when the vehicle had not yet been towed, I was compelled to reach out to the police to see what the status was. It was at this time that the police department informed me that they had received a directive from someone within the city's leadership to not tow the vehicle, despite it being both abandoned and junked. I assume this directive came with the consideration of the fact that this code is under current review, but how long do you deem it appropriate and fair to keep your tax-paying, law-abiding, and typically patient homeowners exposed to individuals who are in and out of trouble with the law, perpetually spending nights in the jail, and likely dealing drugs from their vehicle? What prompted this decision to go against the recommendation of Longmont Police and code enforcement? After many phone calls and getting through to the right people this morning, we were able to get this vehicle towed today. Thank you again to Longmont Police and code enforcement. But the remaining concern is twofold. One, when will this code revision bear fruit? And two, what happens in the interim? This is perhaps more important. If there's time to go over this, this may get locked up for some time of deliberation, and I understand that. But what happens in the interim? It is my opinion that where ambiguity exists in the code, there is responsibility to exercise discretion, interpretation, and common sense.
We got the gist of it, so thank you very much. I don't know who would have said not to do that, but it can probably get you some answers offline from somebody.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
And I know we've asked the city to draft the code and bring it back, first reading, second reading, so.
Yeah, my main question is when, and what happens in the interim?
Do you... Wilbert Talmage?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name's Wilbert Talmage. I reside at 1110 Baker Street, Longmont, Colorado, 80501. Patty and I, Patty Malfetti and I collaborated on this, and it's a little bit more of the same that Ethan just came up with. But I'm here to discuss the ongoing issue regarding the lack of an enforceable ordinance to prohibit people from living in their cars and vehicles on the streets of Longmont, and specifically the junk trailer on 11th Avenue, which we brought to the council's attention on January 24th. I am disappointed and frustrated at the city's lack of sense of urgency regarding writing this ordinance. Five weeks ago, we were told by our ward representative and the city manager that a special task force was meeting that week to start writing the ordinance, and that it would be done deal within six to eight weeks. Sadly, that is not the case, as the task force met for the first time first week of February and has yet to have a second meeting. The city and specifically code enforcement appear to be so afraid of eliciting a lawsuit by the ACLU that their efforts to move forward are stymied before they begin. We have been given excuse after excuse by code enforcement as to why the vehicle should not be towed, although currently the vehicle, the owner has been jailed and the vehicle was truly abandoned, and met the city's definition of a junk vehicle. The trailer finally was towed today, and we are very grateful to the Longmont Police Department for acting quickly to make this happen. How can it be that a homeless man who is a drug dealer, living in a horribly dilapidated trailer, who pays no taxes, have more rights than the hard-working citizens of Longmont, who only want to protect their property values? How is this possible? Please take this matter seriously and act quickly to promote the enforceable ordinance so that we can protect our property values and ensure that Longmont continues to be a nice place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Tiger? Looks like you are now living at 350 Kimbark Street.
I am living at 350 Kimbark Street, and I will continue to live there. I think it's a bad idea, at least for me, to give out my home address. And, yeah, because you might know it. Anyway, I see that you're coming up with this ordinance tonight. I've looked through it briefly. I don't see any stuff in there about warrantless searches or any of that stuff that you and I wouldn't like. And it looks pretty good. And I'm really happy that you went back for a second draft at it and really picked along. I know that Aaron and a lot of folks in planning had a lot to do with that. And I think it looks good. And here, I'm saying, yeah, go with it. I like it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends first call, publicly invited to be heard. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I know Sean is talking with one of the members of public that spoke, but if Sean can hear me, if he could just go ahead and why don't, why doesn't Sean just go ahead and give us the update that he sent us just a little while ago regarding the... the RB parking on the street? Would you do that for us? Thank you. Thanks, Sean. Give you a minute. I didn't mean to interrupt, but since someone else was talking about the same thing, we might as well just go ahead and get the explanation that Sean has provided to council.
Mayor, members of council, Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. As I was just explaining to the gentleman that spoke at Public Invited to Be Heard, we have made some progress with regard to your directive for us to look at the on-street parking of RVs and campers. So there are a number of issues that go into this. First of all, we look at current code and what can and can't be done. The way an RV or camper can be relocated or moved or sighted is if it meets one of two criteria. One, it would be if it's an abandoned vehicle, and that is it meets the definition of an abandoned vehicle, which would be unattended or not moved for more than 24 hours. Some challenges with abandoned vehicles are the fact that if someone lives in the RV, it doesn't actually meet the definition of an abandoned vehicle. Two, if, if, yeah, so if it's on the street and it's lived in, it cannot, you know, we cannot sight that vehicle. Secondly, because the code is silent on how far the vehicle actually has to be relocated, for instance, if it's on a street, if it simply moves an inch or two, a foot, that meets the definition of applying, complying with the code, because our code is silent with regard to how far you have to move the RV or camper. And so RV owners have figured out that you only have to move that off the chalk mark that the enforcement officer puts on the tire in order for us not to know if it's been moved, you know, around the block, if it came and left for the day. We simply mark the tire and then ensure that it has been moved off of that chalk mark, which, again, can, is a loophole in that policy. The second way that we can sight or tow an abandoned vehicle, or rather, an RV, is if it's considered a junked vehicle. So there are three definitions in the code with regard to what constitutes a junked vehicle. One is it has expired plates, or it's not registered at all. Two, it's wrecked or damaged beyond its ability to be operated. And thirdly, if it has some, it's just simply incapable of being moved. Let's say it's missing a wheel, or there's, the axle is damaged to the point that it can't be moved. So in those three circumstances, and only those three circumstances, can the vehicle be considered junked. So again, if it's abandoned or junked, we can take enforcement action on that and have the vehicle towed. There are some things that we're looking at in terms of ordinance solutions. We have briefly discussed, you know, prohibiting all RVs from being parked on city streets. Obviously, that creates some challenges in that, you know, if you have a family member that's coming for a few days and wants to park in front of, you know, your home to, to stay, that would be prohibited. Currently, you can do that as long as you notify police that you're going to have the vehicle on the street for, you know, more than a 24-hour period. Secondly, if you're loading or unloading your camper or RV in anticipation of camping, that would, could create problems for that if that was prohibited altogether. And thirdly, the, we, I think council looked at this a decade or more ago, and it was very, that banning RVs on city streets was just very, very controversial. So we want to be sensitive to RV owners in general. The second option we've looked at is somehow changing the definition of abandoned to say that if you're living in it, is that still abandoned? So we could make some tweaks to that particular policy. We could also look at requiring you to move it more than, you know, a block. So you would have to, you know, move it to a different block. That way, no one homeowner or business owner is negatively impacted for more than 24 hours. Obviously, that doesn't resolve the issue of people living in RVs. You know, we're not sure about council's direction on that particular question. But some general factors that staff is looking at as we consider policies are the fact that we do believe that if living in RVs in general was banned, then that could create, we estimate, you know, 40 to 70 people are currently living in RVs. Some of those are on private property, but some of them, like the ones that are more public that you probably hear about, are on public property, such as a city street, et cetera. And so obviously, that's a consideration that we want to take pretty seriously. The second one is the fact that we have an issue with very aggressive enforcement of this policy in that tow companies are pretty reluctant to tow a junked vehicle in particular, because they have a real difficult time getting rid of those. People, there's not a market for, you know, old, you know, junked RVs and campers, and so they have a lot of difficulty getting rid of those. So who pays, pays the disposal cost for those vehicles once they are towed by a tow company? So obviously, a lot of challenges, factors that go into our decision-making process. We want to provide you with some enforcement analysis, some legal analysis on any options that we bring. I've just mentioned a few tonight, but we have formed a subcommittee of our Homeless Services Action Team that's looking more specifically at that analysis, enforcement, and legal analysis, and we do plan to bring that back to you in late March or early April. Can I answer any questions?
Mayor?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So you anticipate to bring an ordinance back in late March or early April, or just have a discussion?
Our, I believe, Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Santos, I believe our direction was to bring you back some options. So we want to bring back, you know, three to four options for you with that enforcement and legal analysis, so that you can make a decision on what direction you'd like to go.
So only, here, we only have two meetings in April, in March, excuse me.
Right. So I know we've got the March 21st.
21st.
That's, that is a possibility of at least bringing some of those options, or the, you know, first or second meeting in April.
So would that be like a general business item where we have discussion, and then whatever direction from that?
Bring the ordinance back.
Correct.
I think the other thing in this, in this analysis that everyone's working on is that it has to be broadly applied to the community. Can't be specifically applied in this case, which also adds another point to the conversation. The other thing is recently we've also had other complaints about other types of trailers that we've had parked in neighborhoods, and so not related to this, but something where that may come into play.
Mayor?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, it also might be just, you have in here definitions. I think definitions of what an RV is, what a trailer is, what a vehicle is. I think a vehicle, I think of a pickup truck, a car, whether it's electric or gas or what have you. I think of an RV as a vehicle that you, an RV is a recreational vehicle that you can drive. A trailer is, you know, something that you tow behind a vehicle. So I think definitions might be key in addressing some of these issues.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda.
The first item on your consent agenda is ordinance 2017-11, a bill for an ordinance, excuse me, conditionally approving the vacation of gas, electric, sanitary sewer-water line, public access, excuse me, non-buildable, and utility easements generally located in the Creekside Business Park Second Filing and Creekside Business Park Second Filing Replat A. Public hearing and second reading, this ordinance is scheduled for March 21st. Item 8B is ordinance 2017-12, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of right-of-way generally located in the Creekside Business Park Second Filing. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 21st. Item 8C is ordinance 2017, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of utility and drainage easements generally located in Blue Vista PUD Replat A. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 21st. Item 8D is ordinance 2017-14, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of right-of-way generally located in the Blue Vista PUD Replat A. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 21st. Item 8E is ordinance 2017-15, a bill for an ordinance approving the amendment to the agreement in furtherance of annexation for the Quail East Annexation to the City of Longmont, Colorado. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 21st. Item 8F is ordinance 2017-16, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 9.6 and Chapter 2.97 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding medical and recreational marijuana and administrative civil penalties. Ordinance 9G, 8G is Resolution 2017-09, a resolution of the City of Longmont approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for a marijuana impact grant. Item 8H is Resolution 2017-10, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for parent education services. Item 8I is Resolution 2017-11, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Genesis program. 8J is Resolution 2017-12, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Genesis Program. Item 8K is Resolution 2017-13, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Housing Authority for its RISE program. Item 8L has been pulled from the agenda. Item 8M is Resolution 2017-15, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Wildlife for grant funding for flood recovery at Button Rock Preserve. Item 8N is accept a gift to the Longmont Public Library from the Keith W. N. Mildred S. Stewart Family Trust in the amount of $40,000. Item 8O is authorize the allocation of $3,786 from the General Fund Council contingency for Longmont Youth Council attendance at National League of Cities Conference. And staff would like to pull item F for short presentation, and then also L has been pulled entirely.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Christensen?
I think we should pull G and decide upon that at a later time after we've resolved what we're going to do with marijuana, because we won't be eligible for that otherwise. Isn't that right? No?
No.
Okay. All right. Never mind G.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move the consent agenda minus F and L.
Second.
All right, that's moved in second. And Councilmember Peck?
I was going to ask to remove item E, 8E. I just have one question on that. So can we amend the, the motion?
Okay, so the motion, new motion is to approve the consent agenda minus EF and L.
Second it again.
Okay, let's vote on that. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2017-09, a bill for an ordinance designating the Dell House at 430 Emory Street as a local historic landmark. We do not have a formal staff presentation on this item, but Karen Bryde is here if you have any questions.
Okay. I think we have a couple people have signed up here to speak on this matter. So I'm going to open the public hearing on ordinance 2017-09. This looks like Ann Hunter and Dido Clark.
Hi, I'm Ann Hunter. I live at 430 Emory. It's my house, and I requested the designation. I think, you know, everything I can say is based on the survey that was done. So it was built by some of the founding members of Longmont, and a number of families have lived there that were important. It hasn't been altered since the time that the designation was done. So unless you have any questions, I don't think I need to say anymore.
Okay. Dido Clark?
Hi, my name's Dido Clark, 534 Baker Street. I'm the co-chair of the Eastside Neighborhood, and I just want to say I'm fully in support of this.
Okay.
Marking proposal.
Thank you. All right, if there's anybody else that'd like to speak on this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance 2017-09. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2017-09.
All right, that's been moved in seconded. That's, Councilmember Christensen?
I'm glad we're preserving this. This is exactly the kind of medium-to-small house that is still affordable, that we need to protect, and it's a, it's a great little example of Longmont's houses. Thanks.
Okay, let's vote. And that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your first item pulled from consent, I believe, was E, and that is the ordinance 2017-15. It's a bill for an ordinance in agreement of furtherance of annexation for the Quail East Annexation. And Erin is going to answer your questions.
Okay, Councilmember Peck, you're the one that pulled it.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Erin. So my, my question was, why do they want to limit the number of affordable houses, housing units in this Blue Vista? Is that what that is?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, Erin Fosdick, Planning and Development Services Department. I think really what they're requesting is a reduction in what they would be required to construct. And so in order to make the project work as they've currently identified it, moving towards smaller, single-family detached units, they're requesting to build 28 new affordable units. I don't know that they're, that they would be precluded from building additional affordable units, but that would be the minimum that they would be required to build under our program.
Oh, so they're asking for a minimum, not a total reduction of the total amount of affordable houses?
I don't think, I don't think we would ever turn someone away if they wanted to build additional affordable. So this would be the minimum.
Okay.
If this is approved and their development plan is approved, then they would be required to build 28 new units for a total of 60.
Okay. And the other thing, and this is just for my education, I guess, on the CDBG grant, if I understand that correctly, they do not get the money until the last affordable house is built and sold. I mean, they do not have to pay the loan back. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, I would need to ask Kathy Fedler to respond to that, and she will be here when this items, item comes back on second reading, and I can make sure that we address that question at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. So I move item 8E.
Okay, I'll second that. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
And your next item pulled was item F, and that is the marijuana ordinance, and Erin will make a short presentation. Sean will start this presentation, sorry.
Mayor Coombs, Sean Lewis, once again. Just before Erin presents the ordinance, I just wanted to make a couple of acknowledgements with regard to some of our staff and advocates in the community who have helped us with this. Obviously, Erin has really done a yeoman's work on both the Marijuana Forum that we had, facilitating that, and crafting the ordinance and helping lead some of those revisions that you're seeing tonight. But I also want to acknowledge the rest of our Marijuana Task Force, Shannon Stadler, Sarah Arney, Michelle Goldman, Sean Harper, and Richard Eastus. Some of them are here tonight, have set aside some time to be with us tonight to answer any questions you may have. But we also had a very active discussion, not only at the Marijuana Forum that we had, and got great input from that, from citizens, but I also want to acknowledge three individuals who met with us individually to talk about their concerns and gave us some real good policy direction and advice. Paul Renix, Ashley Weber, and Terry Robnett. And a couple of those could not be with us tonight, but did want to send their thanks, and I think I forwarded an email to you as well. Providing legal representation for, for our Marijuana Task Force was also our city attorney, Teresa Tate, who did a great job providing that guidance. So just want to acknowledge those folks, and with that, I'll turn it over to Erin.
Great, thank you, Sean. Once again, I'm Erin Fosdick, Senior Planner with Planning and Development Services Department. And we pulled this item tonight just to give you an update on the changes that we made since we talked with you in fall of 2016. This item is scheduled for second reading and public hearing on March 21st, unless we hear otherwise from you. So thank you, Sean, for introducing the team. That was important. And also, we have a lot of other experts besides Sean and I that will probably assist in answering some questions, so know that those folks are here. And as Sean mentioned, I'm really thankful for the community involvement that we've had on this. So I know Paul's in the audience and a few So I know Paul's in the audience and a few others that have participated, and then some that couldn't be here tonight, so want to give a little shout out to them. Just as a review for council, it feels like we've been talking about this for a while, and that's because we have. We started this discussion with you last year, kind of related to the overall discussion on retail marijuana shops, which, as we heard earlier, we'll be bringing back some information on. But particularly related to the home grow piece, you provided some initial direction that staff should do some research on this in summer. And so we looked at best practices and approaches that other communities are taking, did some general research, and brought back some information to council in September. At that time, I think there were some concerns raised by some members of the community and some additional questions that council felt needed to be answered, and so we took a little bit of a pause and did some additional outreach. As Sean mentioned, we did the forum that several of you attended, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We also conducted a community survey. We'll share some data there. I know many of you have seen that, but just as a quick reminder. And then what we want to present to you tonight is really the recommendations that are contained in the proposed ordinance, and then obviously take any questions that you have. As I mentioned, we did an anonymous online survey. It was a pretty simple survey. We asked five questions of the community. We got a good response. We had nearly 1,000 responses to this survey. We had four multiple choice questions, and the fifth question was really an open-ended, "Do you have anything else you want to tell us?" And if you looked at the survey responses, you'll see that the community did have a lot that they want to tell us about this. So the first question we asked is, "How do you currently use marijuana?" And you can see here that about 24% use it for medical purposes, 21% use it for recreation. A lot of the other, we discovered in the comments, is folks that say they use it for both, folks that said it's none of your business, folks that say they prefer not to answer. But about half of the community or survey respondents reported that they do not use marijuana. 17% of the respondents indicated through one of the questions that they currently grow marijuana. So that's about 200 of the respondents. Of those, the majority of those grow six or fewer plants. We also asked people if they were the only ones growing in their house, and I think that's important as we look towards our recommendations. And we found that 66% of the respondents that say they are currently growing marijuana are the only ones growing in their house. 25% of the people that responded to that question indicated that they live with one other person growing marijuana, and then 9% live with multiple adults that are growing marijuana within the house. As we mentioned, we had a community forum, and thanks to those council members that were able to attend, for those that didn't attend, we provided the notes to you in your packet. We started off this, the morning of the 22nd, with a panel discussion, and so we had some great information from our state representative, Jonathan Singer, and so we really appreciated him providing kind of the framework from the state and what's been going on in this ever-changing landscape. We also had information from public safety staff. Sarah Arnie provided information, as well as Shannon, from a code enforcement perspective. We had also representatives from the Colorado Cannabis Chamber of Commerce and the Cannabis Patients Alliance that provided some differing perspectives. After that, we kind of broke out and gathered feedback from the participants and asked them some really pointed questions about what their concerns were with the proposed regulations, what they liked about those, how the city could best regulate home grows, and so we got some good ideas. And then we asked people to do a dot voting exercise on the number of plants that they thought was appropriate. And those results are in your packet. And so using that information, the information that we had gathered through our research in terms of approaches other folks are taking, and the feedback that we got from council throughout the year last year, we've come up with an ordinance. And there are some things that are consistent with what you've seen previously, and some things that we've changed, and so I'll just highlight that. In terms of locations, we've changed this up a little bit to really look at not only allowing for growing, processing, and cultivating within the primary residence, but also for accessory structures. That was something that we heard quite a bit from the community seemed appropriate. Another change that we've made in this proposed ordinance is the number of plants. The way that it's currently written is consistent with state law, people would be allowed six plants per person. We've also acknowledged that our municipal code already allows for five unrelated people to live in a house, and so we've acknowledged that in this ordinance. I do want to point out that the survey results we just went through, the majority of people do not live with another person that's cultivating marijuana. Also, our average household size in Longmont is about 2.58 persons. That includes children. So there's not an abundance of households that have five unrelated people living together, but we felt that this was an important change to make our proposed ordinance consistent with our municipal code and therefore make it defensible. So that's a change. The other change that we were encouraged to make with our patient advocates and patients was to create an exemption for medical marijuana patients. We heard loud and clear through the survey, I think council heard through testimony, and then through some follow-up focus groups that we had, that there are patients that may have a need for more than six plants because of their condition, because of the way they're able to use marijuana. And so we saw this as an opportunity to address that in the ordinance. And so we've created an exemption for patients and an exemption for caregivers. And the way that we're proposing that we approach this is that patients could be asked to show their medical marijuana ID card to demonstrate that they are a patient. At no time would code enforcement or law enforcement be asking medical questions. That wouldn't be appropriate. But the card could illustrate that a patient is indeed a patient. For caregivers, they would be required to show their caregiver registration card. You can see an example here, obviously, John Doe at 123 Anywhere is not a real person, but this is an example of the card that the state could issue. You can see it has a caregiver ID. Law enforcement could, if they deemed necessary, use this to check on a certain ID, a certain location, to see what that caregiver is allowed in terms of number of plants. And so that exemption is something new in the ordinance that we did not have previously. I should also mention that the state recently launched caregiver registry system, and so that's what we would intend to use to kind of check these exemptions as needed. Other parts of the ordinance, many of these are similar to what we presented to you previously. Odor mitigation, using a reasonable person standard so that odor from cultivating, processing, or production could not be detectable from the property line. This is, I know we've talked about this previously. The reasonable person standard is something that's used frequently in our code for numerous other nuisance-type enforcements.
So Erin, one of the people that came up at public invited to be heard, so you have an adjacent property. If those odors transfer to, through the wall, then obviously, when I read this odor mitigation, that would protect that person, because it says odor from marijuana cultivation, production, or processing shall not be detectable from an adjoining lot, parcel, tract, public right-of-way, or building unit by a person with reasonable and ordinary senses. So that does give someone that lives in a common townhome protection to say, "Hey, I'm smelling these." Is that correct? Is that how you would read this ordinance?
I think that's correct. There are protections afforded for people in residential units. You know, I think that there may be instances when someone has to install some type of additional treatment or system to mitigate odors. What those exactly are, I don't know at this time, but yes, I think the intent would be that your cultivation, production, or processing is not negatively impacting your neighbor. And again, it's a reasonable person standard, so I think we would rely on code enforcement to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, of course, you know, one of the more important pieces of this ordinance is compliance with other codes. So ensuring that if people are, I think the speaker that we heard in public invited to be heard talked about, you know, the measures for safe growing in homes. So, you know, we want to make sure that if people are installing grow lights or different types of system, that they're meeting all the fire, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and building codes, and getting any necessary permits and inspections for that type of work, just to make sure that the home is safe for them, but also for their neighbors and for the city as a whole. Another change that we've made is rewording this section that deals with entry for inspection purposes. And really, we've done this to make it more consistent with other parts of the code. So certainly, if a person gives consent to enter the home, that would obviously be allowed. If consent is not given and there's not an exigent circumstance, then a warrant would be needed, and that's, you know, spelled out in our code already. And so that part, that section of this ordinance has been cleaned up a bit based on concerns that we heard with the first version. And then the penalty section, we are still proposing that violations to this section of the code be administrative civil penalties. And the fee schedule, you'll see laid out in the ordinance, that part has not changed from when we presented this last year.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Erin, talking about the civil penalties, when I was reading some of the comments in the packet, there were a lot of negative comments about being penalized for this. But you also listed about 20 provisions to the Longmont Municipal Code in the ordinance, and I'm wondering if the penalties for those codes are equal to the penalties for marijuana? We're not really making it more onerous than other codes as far as penalties go? Is that correct?
Mayor Coombs, councilmember Peck, we actually have proposed higher penalties for violations to this section of the code. You know, and in talking kind of conceptually and how this would work, I don't think that, you know, if the ordinance goes into effect the next day, code enforcement is going to be writing tickets. You know, we would obviously, I think typically with code cases, and Shannon can correct me if I'm wrong, but we give folks time to comply with the code before we would find them. And so what we talked about with our team and with other folks is that, you know, again, this is really aimed at people who are not meeting the intent of the law and are using our lack of regulations potentially as a way to do something that, again, is not meeting the intent of the law. And in order to prohibit that, we probably need to look at fines, you know, above $100, which is the first administrative order for most code violations. And I don't know if there's anything else to add to that.
So Mayor Coombs, councilmember Peck, Shannon Stadler, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. So administrative fines and penalties, we decided to go with that on marijuana violations because we didn't want to criminalize the, having too many plants in your house.
Okay.
So typically, we envision this ordinance being regulated by complaints mostly, or happenstance, maybe we come across something. And mostly what we would do is give a correction order first, say, "Well, you've got too many plants. Here's what the code says. We'll give you X amount of time to remedy the situation, and oh, by the way, your electrical's really bad and plumbing's all messed up, and we'll give you time to fix that, too." And then, say, if somebody was either unable to or unwilling to come into compliance, that's when, you know, the fines would step in after that.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I do have a question with that, because the, no more, there isn't any, there's just a penalty, and there's no, nothing written in here about a warning or about the ability to remedy. So, you know, that seems to mean that it could be kind of whimsically applied, and...
So all of our, so councilmember Christensen, all of our administrative fines are left up to the discretion of a code enforcement inspector who, you know, deals with the code every day. And depending on the situation, whether it's egregious, obviously, you know, they were, had every intent to violate the law from the beginning, you know, those, all of those things are always taken into consideration when, when an inspector goes out and applies any of the codes that we enforce. So typically, the first order of business is a notice of violation to correct. If this is the third time we've been to this house for the same problem?
Yeah, right.
They, you know, they, they got rid of the plants, and then now there's more plants again, and, you know, and it's the same people that we're dealing with, then of course, we're going to treat them differently, because we've already advised them that they're under violation.
Well, my concern is that it says here that the, each and every day, a violation of the provisions of this chap, you know, for instance, snow removal, if you don't remove the snow, it costs $25. But here, it's like the first day is $500, the second day would be $750, the third day would be $999, and presumably, the following days would be that. So in seven days, you would accumulate $6,249 in fees for not mitigating it.
So councilmember Christensen, that is, that's a possibility. That's not the way fines are typically applied. Again, it's a discretionary issue.
Yeah.
If we, you know, gave somebody a $500 fine, say they had too many plants, they, we gave them a correction notice, they didn't do anything, so now we come back and we say, "Okay, here's your fine. You have another 10 days."
Oh, okay. Okay.
To try to get into compliance before I, you know, I give you, again, we have to take each case separately, because depending on the feedback we're getting from the people we're dealing with.
Okay.
If there's just no...
They're not willing to do anything.
They're just not willing to do anything, then I'm going to come back the next day and say, "Okay, here's your next fine." But if they're working, they're saying, "Oh, wow, you know, I didn't realize I was in violation. I really want to try and fix this. I want to come in and get a building permit, too." Then I'm going to give them more time before I would even think about giving them a second fine.
Oh, okay. I understand. It's just that the law as written would allow the city to fine them $6,000 in a week.
It, it does allow that, but you also have to trust your...
Right.
...enforcement inspectors to, to apply the law rationally.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, thanks to everybody who worked on this, Paul and Ashley, and I, it's quite apparent, the revisions are better. I guess my only question is, what, what, the comment earlier about, I mean, there was a comment, and I don't know if there's any factual basis to it, are there, when you're in an apartment building or a duplex, are there safety risks regarding the equipment used for a marijuana grow? I mean, are there fires? Are there, I mean, are these...
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Protan Bagley, I think what we're trying to address with this regulation is to ensure that people are making the appropriate modifications if they need to, consistent with our building code, to reduce the risks. You know, I'm not, I'm not an expert in indoor growing by any means. I'm sure there's folks in the audience that could speak to that better, but I think that that's one of the reasons that we want to make these changes, is to, you know, reduce maybe some of the concern of people coming in for a building permit to modify electrical systems, mechanical systems, so that they would make the changes more appropriately.
So there's a rental property. So Mayor Protan Bagley, there is a section in the ordinance that talks about tenants and lessees having to have the permission of the property owner to grow in a rental property. So we wanted to make sure that property owners knew what was going on in their properties. And so if you're talking about a multifamily apartment-type setting, I'm guessing that the managers aren't going to sign off on those, but I don't know that for sure. But in a single-family rental, definitely, if we came across something, and we have come across them before, where the property owners had no idea that there was a marijuana grow in their rental. So that would be the first, that would be part of the correction order, is you don't have your landlord's sign off on this. Do they know you're doing this? That's one of the things you're going to need to provide.
And the only reason I bring it up, I mean, I'm of the belief that if you want to use marijuana, go nuts. You can do whatever you want, as long as it just doesn't impact other people. So that's really the genesis of my question, would they be impacted? And so if they can't smell it, if they can't burn down each other's houses, and they need their, need the permission of the landlord, I guess I don't have any concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Looks like you got one last slide.
I think we've covered that. It's discussion and questions.
Oh, okay. That's it. All right.
How about it?
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
I would like to thank everybody involved with this, Erin Fosdick, Sean Lewis, Teresa Tate, Shannon Stadler, Sarah Arne, and Michelle Goldman, and the additional... Tate, Shannon Stadler, Sarah Ehren, and Michelle Goldman, and the additional civilians, Paul Renix, and Ashley Weber, and there was one other...
Harry Robnett.
Okay. Because this is, this is a very, very complicated and very thorough thing, just on the home grow question. And this is, so, this is just for home grows for both medical and recreational, and it's necessary to clarify, and I think that's what this has done, to clarify our public policy because we don't really have one right now. So that's causing problems. My concern originally was to protect our housing stock, so it's used for people, not bought up and used for growing plants inside, and also to protect our industrial space, which is kind of in short supply, so that isn't used excessively for marijuana, you know, so it doesn't become a monopoly of grow houses here. This doesn't really address that, but I would hope that we could do something to, say, limit the number or, and the zoning maybe, of those grow houses. We don't know, I don't think, who's growing what, and I've heard lots of discussions around the neighborhood, various neighborhoods, of people telling me that places are being bought up and turned into grow houses, and that really concerns me.
That's why we wanted this ordinance brought forward, so we could control it. I mean, that was the whole point of this ordinance.
Right, but it doesn't talk about commercial.
Well, no, but this is not, go ahead.
I think it does, kind of in a, a little bit of a backdoor way.
Yeah.
And that way is that, if you look at the ordinance in terms of restricted to primary residents, plants may only be cultivated, produced, and processed on the property where the person's primary residence is located. And so typically, that's, we don't typically have people living in industrial spaces. So that wouldn't be allowed, because it's really for residential, this is again, residential growing.
So we're not allowing any commercial grow houses?
That is correct. We currently have a prohibition on that.
Okay.
You know, we will be, it sounds like, talking about that with you in upcoming weeks or months.
Okay.
And that may be something that we address at that time, but that would not be allowed under this current ordinance.
Okay. We might want to amend this a little bit to talk about townhomes and condos, because they don't have a landlord, and so perhaps there could be something where the majority of owners would have to okay, would have to okay it. You see what I mean? Because the lady who spoke talked about, she has a condo, I believe, and so this doesn't cover that.
Yes, it does. It covers it because it says clearly that if the order affects the adjacent property, then they're not in compliant. So that's the protection.
Yeah, I guess, but it's kind of after the fact, after it's become a problem.
But you shouldn't disallow, if two condo owners have well-built, well-ventilated, well-designed condos, and they're not bothering each other, then you're saying that because they're in a condo, they can't grow? I mean, I think...
Well, yes, they could, if they, if everybody agreed that it was fine, if the majority agreed. Oh, well, anyway, that's...
I think it's a slippery slope. I think this thing does that, that if someone's bothered by the order, I mean, it clearly says that, that they can complain, and then, that's the whole point of the ordinance.
And we have included a provision that I think speaks a little bit to what you're talking about, and this was based on feedback from the public. If someone wanted to grow marijuana in a, more of a common area, or more of an area that was accessible by the public, then they would need that permission, both from a building owner, if it was a rental situation, but also from the residents. And so I think we do get to that a little bit, and hopefully, with all of the other sections of the code, in terms of code compliance, as well as odor mitigation, the impacts of what someone was doing in their individual residence would not be noticed by their neighbors. That's the intent.
Okay. On the issue of caregivers, if they are being paid as caregivers, aren't they actually commercial instead of just growers?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, I am not entirely certain of the whole structure. I do know that as we looked at this, caregivers that have over 99 plants are considered a business, and so therefore, they would be regulated differently and not covered under this ordinance. And I'm getting head nods that that seems to be correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yes, if they are paid, then they are considered a business rather than a caregiver.
Okay. One of the, one of the things that happened in the forum also was that many people wanted marijuana to be able to be grown outside. And according to the state law, the actual law, not the thing on Colorado.gov, but the actual written law, it says that it must be in an enclosed and locked space, and cannot be visible from the street, and it cannot be open and public, which would actually legally allow people to grow this in their backyard if it were in a caged cage, or in a standard backyard little greenhouse, or something like that. I would like that sort of, I would like to propose that we include that in the law, or clarify that, or not exclude.
And so I think some of the changes that we've made, and I may have glossed over this, whereas previously, we were restricting this to the primary residence only, we have said that they may be cultivated, produced within a residence, or an accessory building or structure, really located on the same property, but again, that they can't be visible from the property line, so...
Right, in other words, the backyard and fenced in. But, so an accessory building would include, like, a little greenhouse?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think this is, this is incredibly detailed, and I think it's a good job. Thanks.
Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is definitely an improvement of the initial offering for this kind of home growth, and I will be supporting it. I do want to make just one comment about, this is for the grow and, growing and processing of marijuana products, and just as a reminder to the community that we have to follow state law when it comes to the processing part of this, and make sure that we're not using hazardous chemicals or dangerous practices, as this is what's been creating a lot of angst in Denver, for example, when they have these buildings blow up because of bad chemicals. So, just as a comment. So I'd like to move ordinance 2017-16.
I'll second it. All right, let's vote.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the sales and use tax standardization, standardized definitions, and Jim Golden will make this presentation.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break.[1101.73]
Okay, could we all take our seats and resume our meeting? So we can get Mr. Golden home tonight? Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, I'm Jim Golden. This item is the Sales and Use Tax Standardized Definition Project. So you know, you need some halftime entertainment so people don't leave during the break. Because, you know, this is riveting stuff. And, you know, even my coworkers are gone. But that's okay. They all wished me well. They said they all support sales tax. So... Because as you know, sales tax is very important to the city of Longmont. Wanted to first introduce a couple of folks here who are key in putting this project together. You know Theresa Tate, she was just here on the last item, Assistant City Attorney. Richard Eastus is our Sales Tax Administrator. He's been with the city for almost two years now. All of... For that period of time of which he's probably been working on this project mostly, throughout the whole 24 or so months. So this is a project... I want to give you a little background about it first before we get into the detail that I've included in the communication. But as I mentioned, sales tax, of course, is a very important source of revenue for all home rule cities in Colorado. Our general fund, as well as four other major funds of the city, are financed through sales tax revenues. Local collection is very important in the state of Colorado for home rule cities. We believe that by having our own ability to collect instead of state-controlled collection, it does allow us to have increased revenues. Many cities have found when they go from state-collected to local-collected that it increases their revenues. Also, home rule cities, though, are able to have their own rates and tax bases. And so that does provide... That does make it somewhat complicated for businesses who operate in Colorado as compared to states where it is totally state-collected. So we have 69 home rule municipalities that locally collect their tax. They control their base and their collection and auditing, as I mentioned. Over 90% of the municipal sales tax in Colorado is collected by home rule cities that are self-collecting. So we do that under the authority, under the state statutes. The home rule authority allows us to be able to do that. For our business, it operates in two or more cities within the state. It creates some issues. They have the ability to have multiple audits of their businesses, multiple points for remittance and licensing, because you have to license with every one of those municipalities that you operate in. A difficulty on sourcing sales to the correct jurisdiction, depending on, you know, where we're located in identification of what entity they're operating in. And then the variations in the sales tax base. The burden of collecting and remitting the tax to multiple jurisdictions has created concerns over the years. And there's been a lot of discussion at the state level for potential solutions to that. Some of those have potentially put an impact on our ability to do home rule collection. That, of course, is important to us. And at the state level, the Colorado Municipal League has worked with us and all the cities in the state to try to protect that. As important that is for us to be able to continue to have that local collection. So what we've done in order to try to deal with those type of efforts, what the state has done and all the cities have done over the years, is done what they can to proactively take reasonable simplification efforts. They do develop, maintain, and open communication with the business community and the tax practitioners. And then they maintain the home rule authority as the highest priority. And we collaborate wherever possible on any simplification efforts. This here is kind of a little bit of a history of some of those efforts over the years. Beginning in the 80s and early 90s, we've had standard definition projects in the past. In fact, in the early 90s, a very large standard definitions package, similar to what we're dealing with today. We've had addressed locator projects in the 2004 time period, kind of dealt with that issue I talked about, where the businesses have a hard time knowing where they're doing business in. We've had a standard exemption purchaser affidavit a couple of years ago put into place. And then most recently, a tax appeal bond, and now currently, this definition project. In 2013, the concerns that were raised at the state level about the complex system led to House Bill 131288, which directed the Department of Revenue to look into uniform base for state and locals. But it had to be revenue-neutral on all the entities. CML supported that project. There was a report that concluded that the uniform base was really not practical, but instead recommended that there would be uniform definitions effort put into place. So in 2014, there was a referred constitutional amendment that was considered regarding the uniform definitions and tax guidance. That was too complex to move forward. And so what was instead decided by the General Assembly was to ask CML to, again, do like they did in 1992, lead a project in which we would try to standardize definitions. So that project did begin a couple of years ago, as I mentioned originally. And a little bit of detail about what that's about. CML has led that effort involving all those home rule municipalities with an objective to have all locally-collecting municipalities determine whether to use the standard definitions within their sales and use tax codes. Again, this is important to be able to continue to preserve our self-collected sales tax system. Just a second, please. So some of the benefits of adopting the standard definitions is that we become more transparent for the taxpayers and businesses, so that our tax codes are a little more clearer for them. We update our tax codes using the combined expertise of dozens of experts that have been involved in this. We demonstrates the values that we have in our retail business community by adopting some simplification efforts. And then we demonstrate our responsiveness to this legislative request from two years ago. So what's gone on over the past couple of years is that CML has led an effort with a steering committee that has addressed some of these definitions that are used throughout all of these entities. It's gone on for, again, 24 so... At least 12 months process that kind of went through about a year ago. And what that group did was identify all those issues for consideration, shared that with all of the municipalities, and asked them to review them. CML had a couple of key members that were involved in this that led up this effort for all of the cities that actually left CML a little over... A little less than a year ago. And so this kind of stalled in 2016 as a result of that, not having that leadership to move it along. But it was picked back up here in the third and fourth quarters of 2016. And so moved towards trying to have all of our home rule cities consider adopting these So the factors that were considered important in the drafting of the standard definitions were that the local businesses perceive no change in the tax treatment, that there'd be no significant loss or gain in local government revenue. And we're not really able to do that without a table vote. We're not able to actually gain extra revenue as a change in a... From a change in the tax code. So we're trying to make that so that there is very little impact, and that most of this is about clarification. And then we would try to get standard definitions for terms common within those 69 municipalities. And it's designed so that any single municipality could tail through imposition or exemption. So not everyone is... CML doesn't expect all the cities to actually adopt all of these. They want them to make their best efforts to adopt the ones that do work for each individual city, recognizing that there still could be some problems in each area. But, again, the best effort that we can make does, in effect, try to move us closer to tax simplification for the businesses. Before I get to that, a couple of other things. So this was also... This was reviewed by the business community and attorneys for the business community, as well as our municipal attorneys. And so I did hand out here a letter at your desk just now. It's a letter from a number of organizations, a letter of support for this effort, from KC, from the Colorado Retail Council, from the Colorado Automobile Dealers Association, and from Simplify Colorado Sales Tax. So what we've done, we had Richard and Theresa, as well as our former sales tax auditor, were involved in, from the city's perspective, to evaluate the definitions that were put together by the CML effort. And so there were 106 different definitions that were recommended. What we've done, probably for presentation purposes, and tried to make this a little bit more easy to follow, is I put them into these six different categories that I'm going to quickly review with you. And to let you know what... Where it is we have put each of these 106 definitions. So first, category one is that there is no change needed in our code because it already agrees with the proposed standard definition. We had 14 of those type definitions out of the 106. Category two is that the definition in our code is already in our code, but our code should be updated to the new CML standard definition. There was 13 of those type of definitions. Category three is that the definition is in our code, but our code should be updated using a little bit of a customized version of the proposed CML standard definition. And that's just three individual definitions that fall into that category. Category four is that definition is in our code, but the staff believes that the code should not be updated to the new recommended CML standard definition. We had five of those type of definitions involved as well. And then category five is that definition is not currently in our code, but it should be added. So we had 10 of those. Then the majority of them fall into category six. We have 61 definitions that are not currently in our code, but our staff believes that they should not be added because they would add no value. Most of those really are issues that do not come into play with Longmont's code. And we didn't see any sense adding them to the code at this point in time. So within your communication, I have three attachments. And if any of you noticed, I've labeled them attachments C, B, and C. Sorry about that.
For simplification.
Yes. Thank you very much. So I just noticed that this afternoon. But the first attachment, C, is a shorter one. And within that one, what we tried to do is really take those six different categories and really, within two pages, just define what those categories are and what type of definitions fell underneath each one of them, except with the exception of category six, since that one is so large. That one, we've listed those all on attachment B, just a one-page list of the names of those definitions, and that they're not in our code. And then finally, attachment C is the full list...
C2?
C2, thank you very much. The real attachment C is the longer attachment C, and that is full of all 106 definitions, the full definition for each, as well as followed by what our staff's recommendation of what we would... Where would we categorize those definitions and what we recommend doing with them. So what we're proposing, we've made recommendations here for you to consider. We would hope to come back to you with an ordinance to adopt these recommended definitions, probably in your regular meetings in April is when we would intend to introduce that ordinance. But we are here tonight to answer any questions you might have about any of the information we've included here. I know you want me to go through each of the 106, but I refuse to do so at this time.
Councilmember Christensen?
I just have one word question. Well, when I look at our sales tax, and it always says manufacturing down, like, huge amount. And I've often wondered if it's because the definition hasn't really kept up with the reality of what manufacturing is, which it seems to me a lot of things that we now call technology are actually manufacturing. I mean, there are manufactured goods, there are CD printers, that's manufacturing, a lot of, you know, devices. And here, when you're talking about category four under manufacturing, what do you mean by industrial, since we're getting into definitions? Is that the way it differs from technology, is it's an industrial? Because technology is industrial, too.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, I'm going to ask Richard to address that. But before he does, I just wanted to point out that from our reporting aspect...
Yeah.
...can be different than this definition in terms of manufacturing.
Okay.
We have 12 categories that I report to you on each month within our classification of sales tax accounts. And you're right, that that is... Probably... There are things that probably are not traditional manufacturing that are probably falling underneath that manufacturing category.
Yeah.
It's why I try to include professional and... There's a third category. But all the primary employers is what I refer to as... Because that's where most of our use tax comes from, is those three areas.
Yeah.
It's hard sometimes to categorize some businesses. And we do follow a pretty antiquated categorization system in doing that. But I don't think... I mean, it is at least consistent from year to year. Those same businesses are the ones that may be down. And it does reflect, you know, without getting into the specific businesses, it does reflect some of the primary employers in town that are involved in manufacturing but have reduced their level of operations in recent years.
Yeah.
But I will now ask Richard to address industrial.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, Richard Eastus, Sales Tax Administrator. Councilman Christensen? Basically, industrial in our case would reflect hand-in-hand with the machine and machine tools, which includes the exemption for such in a manufacturing kind of capacity. So in those particular ones, they kind of go together. So we're saying industrial would be the manufacturing process itself. That's pretty much why we want to switch it to that. And it is in code currently as industrial usage, if you look at it. So that's... We kind of want to put them together hand-in-hand. And that's why we were looking to stay with the current code rather than switch to the new code.
Yeah. This will be very useful to have as many consistent things across the state as possible. But you're wise in not changing everything because every town is different. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
She called you this morning. I see on here data processing equipment is not currently in the code, and staff believes it would add no value. What do you call that in our tax code now?
Mayor? Councilman Finley? Basically, sale... Software of any kind like that, including those kinds of things, can be taxable services, depending upon what it is they're doing. They are taxable currently.
Pardon me?
They are taxable currently.
Right. But what do you call them, if you don't call them data processing equipment? Which I don't believe is software. I believe it's storage systems, but...
It depends, because some of it, processing would be processing, whereas storage would be a little different. And there could be software as a service. There could be software delivered via hard copy, via CD, could be software that's delivered over the internet, could be services that are supplied over the internet. And a portion of those are considered taxable, some of them are not. They would be considered tangible personal property.
But what do you call them in our tax code?
So in what Richard... The last statement that he made there, our code addresses tangible personal property. We don't get into multiple definitions.
You don't define it?
We define what's exempted. Otherwise, what's taxable is tangible personal property. We figure if we start to define one thing, we're going to have to define everything.
You have to define it all, yeah. I agree. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
We'll return in April with the ordinance. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Okay, now it's time for final call, publicly invited to be heard. Is anybody in the public who'd like to come down and speak at this time?
Hello. My name is Carl Strope. I live at 1184 Winslow Circle here in Longmont, Colorado. I just want to come forward about... A little bit about police power, why it's worrisome. Actually, I had to go to the courthouse this week. It was not bad, it didn't hurt. Everyone was reasonable, it was really nice. And the... There's no practical concern about the police in Longmont. They're actually very good people. What the concern is, is that as our society builds around governing what is and is not allowed, and as density increases, we have to come up with things like codes to keep people safe. Stoners can be dumb, and they can burn stuff down, and that can do a lot of damage. So we have to fix that. The problem is, how do we enforce that? And I thought that concern came out about building up. When we have trust, and I do have trust in our policing service, that they do build up. They don't come out and smash you all at once. And I appreciate that, because that's reasonable. But it's not always clear. And what we're really worried about is the affect that draws a line between citizens when police power is exerted as this arbitrary force. Even if people do have these options to build up, if they're not aware of that, the affect builds up and the strife builds up. And again, there's no practical worry about that. It's just the increase of political power at some point will become problematic as things move from Washington or wherever in the future. And that's just kind of... That's the worry. It's about what's coming from the outside, not necessarily what Longmont is doing. Because Longmont is great. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Final call, publicly invited to be heard? All right, I'm going to close. Final call, publicly invited to be heard. So now it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just got today notification of a coffee with council that I've been... Staff has attached me to on April 29th. Unfortunately, I'm unable to do that. I know that's a little bit far in advance, but I was wondering if someone could sub in for me. I'll hopefully take another one of theirs. But I can't do that coffee with council on April 29th. My daughter has a softball game. It's me and you.
I was going to say.
I can do it.
April 29th. Councilmember Moore? Thank you very much.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As I'm sure you all know, our... It's our 20th anniversary with our sister city Ciudad Guzmán this year. And as the liaison to sister cities, they have asked me to ask you, how many of us intend to go down for that celebration in Ciudad Guzmán? It's at the end of July, yeah. I don't... Yeah, I don't have the date here. But it is at the end of July.
Okay. Yeah.
I think we should all go.
Is there a minimum number of people?
No, I don't know. And I don't know how we'll pay for it even. But they wanted me to ask how many will go so that they can figure out where to put us down there.
Yeah, we'll need to figure the budget piece out, because I don't think that was... Looking at Sandy, I don't know if it wasn't included in your travel.
I think I had it included in mine.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. We generally have one in-state and one out-of-state... Sorry, two out-of-state conferences budgeted for each of you at this time. Usually during the budget process, we kind of ask what you're looking for, but that certainly doesn't mean that you can't go and support our sister cities. If we find out how many folks would like to go, and you're interested in taking that out of your council contingency, happy to do that and make those arrangements for you. So how many of you are interested?
Well, and I think in particular, they may have some trouble coming up here. It's a possibility they'll have trouble coming up here. And we want to make sure that we recognize that deal down there.
It would be great to know how many are interested, because then we can start to work that out, so... Jim, Bonnie?
I think Brian's gone with his wife, who's arranging everything. No, no, no. This is to Mexico.
Yeah.
Ciudad Guzmán.
Great, thank you so much. We'll start working up a proposal for council contingency.
Anyway, we need to work on that.
It's great.
You'll have to get the exact dates, because I do have kind of a conflict of what's going on, too. All right. Anybody else like to speak? Councilmember Christensen?
I would like to thank the Stewart family very much for donating... From the Keith W. and Mildred S. Stewart family for donating...
and Mildred S. Stewart family, for donating $40,000 to the library. It's wonderful to have such a generous family. They gave a lot of, they, they've been very generous to the city, and I really, I think we all appreciate that. I also wanted to alert people that if you're old, you're going to probably get a call this week telling you that the IRS is going to send in the police immediately and arrest you. So don't bite, it's just...
Did you get a call?
Of course I did. I don't believe the IRS is going to come to my house.
I got the call, too.
Anyway, it's a scam.
Oh, you do? Okay. You don't have to be...
We're going to send somebody to get your utility bill. So is that a year old?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, City Manager, any comments?
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to provide some clarification regarding the trailer issue earlier. We answered some of the questions. Actually, when that occurred, our folks found out about it yesterday. There was obviously law enforcement involved in this. And about mid-day today is when they had the clearance to go ahead and remove the trailer. So it was a pretty quick action based on all of the variables that were in play. And it's definitely allowed us to come together from different parts of the organization and work these issues. But I wanted to give you the timeframe so you could know exactly. I think it was within a day when that occurred.
Thank you.
No other comments. There's a question.
City Attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
This meeting is adjourned.